Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 10th, 2021, regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for joining us. So glad to be here all in person. That's exciting. Exciting to be back together with you all. Laura, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call, please?
Samurai.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Grandland.
Here.
Severson.
Here.
Palmer, here, and Superintendent Stenbeck.
Here.
All right, thank you so much. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed, and our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. And when all will move on to the agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, and we'll start with the approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
No move.
Lorian, second?
Second, Grandland.
All right, thank you. All right, this is my first meeting back in person, so we can just do a typical vote, right? No roll call necessary. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
That was easy.
The meeting is approved. Announcements and correspondence. August 17th, Tuesday at 5:30 PM, there'll be a school board work session here in the community room. On August 24th, Tuesday at 5:45 PM, there'll be a school board community engagement session, and that will be on Zoom. Also on August 24th, which is a Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here in the community room. And on September 7th, Tuesday, is the first day of school for students. And September 14th, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, there's a regular school board meeting, again, here in the community room. Move on to correspondence. Superintendent Stenbeck, do we have any correspondence today?
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence at this time.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to communication to the board. And at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. All right, here we go. We're good, we're good. All right, we're back. Well, welcome back. We're going to move on in our agenda to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report from August 10th and school board minutes from our July 20th meeting. Can I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So moved.
That's Hala. Thank you, Hala. Second?
Second.
Molly, thank you. A discussion on the consent agenda. All right. We'll do a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All right, motion carries. We'll move on. We'll move on to discussion items, discussion, report, and information items, and we'll start with reports from member of the board. I always put this in board book, so it seems random. I try to be random, try to think about who I asked to go first particularly, so I hope I'm not picking on you, Molly.
That's fine.
But I know it's difficult sometime to go first because you're like, did I remember it all?
You know, and I thought about this earlier, and I don't have anything to report out on.
All right.
There we go.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Hala?
Same, I have nothing to report.
It is summer. Laura?
I do have a little bit to report.
All right.
I attended an executive board meeting with 916 to work with our new superintendent, kind of set up things for our check-ins and different progress. She is a brand-new superintendent, so that's really good. I think we've got some good plans in place to be able to give accurate feedback and make sure that we're staying on track. I also attended the 916 board meeting with the full board. That was finally in person again. So that was, it was really different to be back in the same room. Some items of note is that the finance director resigned, so we are in the process of looking for another finance director, and we're kind of hopeful. So we've got some good plans in place. We were very fortunate to have a lawyer who is also an HR expert, as well as being able to handle the financial end, you know, so we've kind of had to split her job duties up. But she's going back to live by her family on the East Coast and going to be the senior director lawyer at a 30,000-student school district. So it's quite a move up for and very exciting, very happy for. I do also want to share a statement that was at AMSD. It was shared with the Minnesota Superintendents by Michael Kasterly. He's the Executive Director of the Council of Great City Schools. And this is kind of in response to all the controversy about critical race theory. Okay? So here it goes. If our history makes some people uncomfortable, then so be it. If some people need to be reminded that everyone was born equal and that no one is superior to anyone else, then let's remind them. If some people are surprised to learn that our culture and institutions, including our own schools, have advantaged some and disadvantaged others, then it's about time. This is not an unfortunate byproduct. This is the purpose of education, and it is perhaps the most patriotic act possible. Because if we believe that our children are heirs to a great nation that is striving to be better and more equitable, then we need to make sure that they understand both the history of the nation and the important role they will play in determining its future. In our quest for a more perfect union, a great nation is not afraid of or threatened by this history or the discussion of it. On the contrary, it is our ongoing dialogue and steady, if not smooth, progress toward justice and equality that makes us great. And that ends my report.
All right. We'll move on to Mary.
Okay, so everybody saying that they didn't have anything makes me wonder if we met before or after the centennial celebration.
We already met.
We already met, okay.
Yeah. Because that popped into my head.
Thanks, Molly. I appreciate that.
No worries.
Well, I did go to Music in the Park last week, which was pretty delightful, and had the opportunity to talk to councilmember Biskins about some, you know, goals for the upcoming school year. I also had an opportunity to meet with students and families, you know, lots of questions coming up as we're gearing up for the upcoming school year. I connected with some admin staff, and then Superintendent Stenbeck, as always, graciously answers my emails that come at all hours of the night. And then we had opportunity to check in just after we had the policy subcommittee meeting.
All right, Lorian?
A short report for me tonight. I just had the chair meeting prior to this meeting.
All right. Of note, Laura was also at the subcommittee. Were you going to say that?
Oh, yeah. I actually had one other item, too.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I completely forgot about it.
You want us to, we'll scoot back to you.
I was also at 916. We accepted the complete withdrawal of the St. Francis School District, and the terms of the separation, they're going to be paying $180,000 for two years to meet their financial obligations.
Thanks. All right, as for me, I had a meeting with Molly. Yep, it was probably more memorable for me than you. I had a call with the superintendent. Hopefully she remembers that. I also, just in case somebody missed it, was at the chair, I'm just kidding. Was that the chair? Is it okay to be funny at board meetings, Dawn? Is there a rule against that? Chair meeting earlier this and the subcommittee on policy. So that is my update. We will move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Stenbeck, do you have anything to report?
I do have a brief report. Chair Severson, members of the board. We are busy hiring staff, you know, finalizing some of those hiring pieces before the start of the school year. And with that, we're preparing to welcome new staff. So the board members received information about scaling the heights, new staff induction, three days coming up, so we're very excited about that. We're also preparing to welcome, you know, all of the students and families back to school. So we'll have more information about that later this evening, but then also information will be sent home at the end of this week to families with the schedules and more detailed information. Looking forward to next week, having a two-day administrative retreat. We're not really retreating anywhere. It'll be on Zoom or in this room, but just, you know, trainings and meetings and other preparations. And I was able to have conversations with member Grandland and Chair Severson, and I thank you for your time.
All right, thanks. We'll move on to Executive Director Niemwee and Dr. John Frye and Brian Hennekenz, a host of Highlanders here, and Emily Gardner, to talk about opening week activities.
Can you see my presentation?
You can, thank you.
Excellent. Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbeck. I am here tonight with a couple of my colleague to present our back-to-school preparation for the 2021 and 22 school year. Our mission, Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong and all succeed. This presentation encapsulate all our core values, and it's an informational update and no governance question. And I'll pass it on to my colleague, Emily Gardner.
Thank you. So as Superintendent Stenbeck said, and good evening, Chair Severson and members of the board and Superintendent Stenbeck. So we are hard at work getting ready for our new staff and our returning staff to come back for the 2021, 2022 school year. So here you see an overview of our plans for the upcoming weeks when we will be having them back. So August 25th through 27th is scaling the heights. And then the following week, we have some building pre-service days, as well as district in-service and convocation. So scaling the heights, always something that we look forward to, a really busy time of year, but a very exciting time of year. It's our three-day induction for our new staff, where they really get a chance to get to know our community, as well as our district and programs. So that first day is really focused on getting to know Columbia Heights. We take a bus tour of the community, which is always memorable. On day two, they really get to know our departments and our programming curriculum. On day three is when they meet their mentor, who will meet with them throughout that first year that they are with us, and have meetings with their principals. The following week, we will have our district in-service on August 31st. Our in-service days, once again this year, will be focused on academics and equity. So we'll have some speakers in the morning for all staff, and then the afternoon will once again be professional development pathways, where all licensed staff will be able to select from one of 16 available pathways that we have for them this year. Convocation, one of the best days of the year. We'll be back in person. We'll be in the Columbia Heights High School Gymnasium to allow for social distancing this year from 9:00 to 11:30, and then followed by our traditional lunch in Cordyce Park. So we would really love for you to join us Wednesday, August 25th, at 8:00 AM, to come join us for breakfast and to meet our new teachers and staff in the community room. And then, of course, on Wednesday at 9 o'clock, we would love to see you there in your blue and gold for convocation in the high school gym. With that, I will pass it back to Executive Director Niemwee to share more about how we will be heightening up this year.
Thank you, Emily. You know, Columbia has some great traditions and acronyms. One of our favorite ones is Heighten Up, which is our commitment to ensuring that we support families, students' learning, and achieve their academic success. So Heighten Up, as four component that our school district will be focusing on to ensure that we deliver upon our promise. Number one is within the confined, the framework of equity, we want to focus on academic acceleration as opposed to academic remediation. Number two, mental health support, and then family and community engagement, and finally facility upgrade. But it's very important for me to say that while we focus on these four areas, Heighten Up is a very fluid approach and flexible, with health and safety as its core priority as we serve students in the coming school year. Starting with academics, we are finally concluding our robust summer school programming. And as you know, we share that we had three sessions of summer school that were well-attended, and we accommodated our families by providing at every session an in-person and an option for online learning. Secondly, we are also committed, going back into this 2021, 22 academic year, to provide a strong literacy instruction. Not that it's new in our district, but we're just enhancing our framework to ensure that every child can experience positive success in our school. Alongside that, we are supporting our teachers with professional development so that they can teach with fidelity. We are also providing additional reading interventions in our schools to ensure that students who need additional support are able to receive it. And because of some of the fundings that we've received from the Department of Education, we're able to expand our instructional coaches, who are known as peer reviewers, from two to five. So each school will have their own instructional coach, who will work alongside with the principal to support our teachers. And finally, we will continue to support technology integration so that our students can continue to become technology literate. As far as onsite learning is concerned, we are excited that the distance learning experiences that we've learned, and we are looking forward to seeing our student to come onsite. So the state and the federal government are urging schools to prioritize in-person learning. So it is our commitment to bring back our students onsite so that teachers can teach them and that the students can learn. In doing that, there is two components that I would like to address. So first, there is the requirement from the Minnesota Department of Health. So when transporting students, federal law requires masks on school transportation, and we will be enforcing that in our district. And secondly, COVID-19 cases reporting. So we will continue, as we did during the past school year, to report student and staff with positive COVID-19 cases as required by the Minnesota Department of Health. So that, those are two things that we are holding true as requirement that will be implemented in our district. There are also some recommendations from the Minnesota Department of Health that we will also adhere by. Number one, when indoor, universal mask will be required for all people in all schools and all settings, ages three years and older, including teachers, staff, students, and visitors to school, regardless of vaccination status. In addition to that, we will maintain the three-to-six feet social distancing. And a lot of the sanitizing that we engaged in last year, we will be continuing with that. So these are just some of the required and recommendation from MDH, and specific communication will be coming out in the mid of August to our families and staff. And I will pass it on to Dr. Frye.
Thank you, Executive, Executive Director Niemwee. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. I have everybody's subject local COVID-19 cases, some good things and some things that we're working on and monitoring over the course of the next few weeks, and if not months. The good thing from Anoka County is that they shared that 75% of our residents here in Columbia Heights and our zip code, Columbia Heights, Hilltop, and South Fridley, ages 16 and up, have been vaccinated compared to 66% for Anoka County. I think that's a testament to our community and their ability and the willingness to ensure safety and to make sure that they're safe as well. So that's great, which could also lead, as we increase vaccinations for younger students, could also show in our students as well in regards to that high percentage of vaccination rates compared to Anoka County. The other piece here is that COVID case rates the last two weeks in the low 20s, which indicates in-person learning, and we want to continue that. We will be hosting a vaccination clinic from 2:00 to 5:00 on September 7th for students ages 12 and up, and for the broader Columbia Heights community as well. And should we get FDA approval for vaccinating for students ages five and above this fall, we would also work with Anoka County to host a clinic and encourage vaccinations for students and families. And then finally, quarantine protocols are being developed following guidance from the Minnesota Department of Health and to provide access to education to make sure that should students need to quarantine, they're also not losing education. Passing it back to Executive Director Niemwee.
Thank you, Dr. Frye. One other component of our Heighten Up is family and community engagement. Each school has a homeschool liaison, and so in the coming school year, we will be utilizing our liaison not only to interact with families of the ethnicity they represent, but all families. In addition to that, our homeschool liaison will also work with our students to support their academic skill development. In doing community engagement, we are very interested to continue the work that we started by providing parent training in the areas of literacy and support, as well as in the area of advocacy. We believe that in supporting our parents and giving them the resources that they need, they will help us as educators to educate their children and to achieve their full potential. And finally, we will also continue to provide building monitors or assisting schools by being an extra hand in the classroom, in the hallway, or in the lunchroom to assist with social distancing and all those mitigating factors that help us to deal with COVID-19. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Dr. Frye again.
Thank you, Executive, Executive Director Niemwee. I have the opportunity to talk about the mental health supports as part of that Heighten Up initiative that we have for this school year. And I like to divide it into two things, spaces and trainings, as well as staff. And so the first one is we're partnering with Alina Health Clinic to develop change-to-chill rooms in all of our buildings, as well as to train staff in health-powered kids, as well as change-to-chill for our secondary students. This is going to be available, the space will be available in all our K-12 buildings. We're also, like I said, training staff in mental illness awareness to ensure that they are able to respond in the moment should their crisis arise, but also to have that perspective when they're working with students, which I think is really important. In regards to the spaces as well that we're developing, we're working with two high school interns who are working with Alina Health this summer to design our room at the high school to make sure that it's aligned with the change-to-chill practices, mindfulness, also some stress relievers to reduce anxiety as well, which I think is going to be exciting. I've been in contact with them, and they're working really hard this summer. And then finally, for some training, we're providing tools for all staff to respond to students in crisis, like I noted earlier. The other piece to this is that staff, we're adding a social worker attendance clerk position to allow that person to do the clerical duties that many of our social workers need to do around attendance, intruency, and child neglect, and what have you. So the, so around attendance specifically, to me, they're going to be making sure that they are doing that clerical task, pulling that data, working with the social worker, sending information home, following up with parents should they need, maybe not. But obviously, the first point of contact would be the social workers. But this is hopefully, the idea here is that the social workers will be able to spend more time with direct support and response to students who may need help, and also proactively. I think that's going to open up their time a lot, so they can be really be proactive with both families and with students. And then finally, we're going to be increasing our school psychologist positions here in the district to further foster additional mental health support for students. And I think having that combination of both social workers and school psychologists is a really nice, a nice way of integrating and weaving skill sets that they both bring to the table for our students. And with that, I'm going to be passing it on to Director Hennekenz.
Sorry, I unmute myself. Thank you, Dr. Frye, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stenbeck. So obviously, there's been a lot of conversation about facility upgrades, HVAC systems, indoor air quality, and so that is a component of our focus and planning as well. And so in order to move forward, we really needed to understand, you know, where we were. We did have a plan in place for most of our systems. It's a long-term plan as far as upgrading our HVAC systems, and so we really needed to revisit that and look at current data, you know, what are the age of our HVAC systems, life expectancy of our HVAC systems, you know, where we have seen more problems and where can we have the most impact for improving indoor air quality. So we looked at that study over the course of close to a year, and we completed that. And then the next step was to really, again, analyze that data, costs associated with that, and start creating a plan for how we can systematically approach upgrading these systems, you know, again, based on what we know today about our focus in with COVID and looking at indoor air quality, how air moves through the building and/or indoor classrooms. So we did look at a short-term phasing, and we're currently starting to talk about the long-term phasing. We really need to get something moving forward as quickly as possible to get projects in place for summer of 2022 to begin implementing that phasing. So again, that, you know, what short-term items can we take care of right away, and then looking for longer-range items, and, you know, looking beyond the federal dollars that came along with this pandemic, and looking at our capital project levy dollars and LTFM dollars in those longer-range plans that fit into the, again, that 10-year long-term planning for upgrading these systems. So you should see more information this fall, earlier this fall, on what our plans for 2022 summer are going to be, because those will have to be bid-out projects.
All right. Any questions? There's a lot of ground covered there, so you might have to jog your memory.
I have questions. I have a few questions. So I understand that MDE is recommending that we have students in person as much as possible, but you also mentioned that when they can't be there, that they're still going to be able to continue to learn. So I'm wondering how? Are we going to have a whole different set of teachers to do online learning, or is it going to be broadcasting what's happening in the class for students who have to be at home because of high-risk situation, they can't be vaccinated, something like that, or if they're quarantined, or they have to be in seclusion, or whatever it is?
Why don't I, why don't I respond to that one? So I'm working with our unions and other stakeholders. At this moment, we're looking at a case-by-case basis for students who test positive and need to quarantine, and we're really looking at it case-by-case because it's, because of age and developmentally appropriateness, knowing that a high school student is, has a higher degree of independence, you know, for learning, and it would be much easier to zoom in to just the regular classroom, whereas, you know, some of our younger students, a four-year-old, has a lot less independence, and depending on their parents' time, because obviously they can't be left alone, might benefit more from some lessons on seesaw or sending home some work. So it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all approach at this time.
Okay. So there is not going to be a parallel program for online?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Really, we're looking at this school year as kind of a fluid approach, right? We know- We know, we've learned so much that things can really rapidly change. And so even with any of these requirements or recommendations, the idea is to start off a little bit tighter, but you know, it doesn't mean we're going to spend the whole entire year with all, with all of these rules. As soon as we possibly can, we will loosen up as much as we can. So the reverse is also true if things get worse and we need to make a shift, we're planning on being very nimble and doing that. So is that, is that clear?
That was going to be the next question, you know, with the changes with Delta and the numbers and stuff. And there's anticipation, so we don't really know what's going to happen. Are we prepared if we have to go more conservative?
Yes, absolutely. So again, we're similar to last year, meeting regularly with, we call them learning model meetings. So that's with our full admin team, but then also meeting with the different union groups and different employee groups. And then as Director Niemwey mentioned, making sure we're having that community engagement and family engagement as well, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we're closely monitoring.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work. It's, it's really hard. I know I'm on that side too in my work and it's, it's hard. So I really appreciate all the work that's going into it. The one other question I had was someone mentioned, I think Director Noembay, about adding two school psychologists. How many school psychologists do we have as a district and how many social workers do we have?
We'll have Dr. Fry.
Or Dr. Fry.
Yeah, we, we will be having four school psychologists and currently we have five social workers.
Thank you.
All right, I see Mary digitally raised her hand and Lauren, your own deck.
I have just a couple of clarifying questions and then looking for more information. So please hang tight while I ask all of my questions. For COVID reporting, I'm just curious, are we reporting positive cases regardless of vaccination status? Is that the requirement?
Dr. Fry?
Yes.
I don't want to miss.
Yeah, it is. We have to report it whether they're vaccinated or not. We did that in the spring with staff as well.
Fantastic. The other one is you noted that there, we're looking for, we're looking, we're anticipating FDA approval for five plus. Is it FDA approval or is it emergency use for five plus? Do you know?
I don't know what I've recently read, or at least what I've, what I've been hearing is that possibly this fall would be FDA-approved. So, but again, with Anoka County is willing to partner with us, we would certainly host another vaccine clinic, which was very well-attended in the spring.
Yeah, fantastic. And then I think just, you know, a couple of the things that I'm particularly interested in is are, would it be possible for us to get more details on how the chill rooms are going to be different from what we currently have? Like what are we, what is that model going to look like and how is that going to be utilized? And the differences between like what we currently have?
We could, we could certainly provide that, a write-up on that.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. And then also, would it be possible to get some additional information in our packets regarding what mental illness awareness training looks like for our staff? And, you know, what are the expectations for our teaching staff to be also monitoring these things? As, and, you know, reporting to the psychologists and social workers too?
Thank you.
All right, Lauren.
Yeah, I have a question that I actually fully expect you won't have an answer to at this time. But regarding, you had talked about, I think Dr. Noembay had talked about the recommendations and the requirements from the federal government and from the Minnesota Department of Health. One of those recommendations is mask-wearing regardless of vaccination status in all indoor spaces. Have there been any conversations or research done with our insurance company in terms of any exclusions, penalties or non-coverage if we, as a board or as a district, make any difference decision other than following MDH recommendations?
And I'm wondering if Brian has a response for that?
No, I, I don't have, I don't want to stand out and have a specific answer on that now, but I can definitely look at that. I haven't heard of any reason for that, but, you know, from our insurance perspective, it's something we're engaged in right now in the renewal process, so I'll definitely follow up with that.
Yeah, thank you. I'd be curious to know if there were, you know, specifically relations to any liability or other such potential concerns for the district should we make decision other than what's being recommended by the Department of Health? Thank you.
Good question. Molly saw real physical hand.
Thank you, yes. Dr. Fry, when you talked about the school psychologists, I know sometimes getting services, mental health services for, for our young children is challenging just because of not having an assessment. Are they able to provide those mental health assessments? Is that maybe hopefully why we're bringing them on board?
Well, we are two things. One, the mental health assessments, we've worked with Anoka County through our ECCFC grant, like to provide those diagnostic assessments for students who may need it through Lee Carlson. So we already have that covered. The school psychologist is able to do additional, both academic but also social, emotional or behavior interventions in the classroom. The other piece of this is that year evaluations for special education, we do get reimbursed through medical assistance as well as special ed dollars. So those are some additional things that allow us to generate more dollars, so to speak, to increase our services.
Okay, so, thank you. Yeah. And then the other question, I just want to confirm, do we still will have school-based therapy then, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, through Lee Carlson, we still will.
Okay.
As well as the anchor program and things like that.
Yeah, follow up Mary.
Will they be remote or will they be actually in person at our school? Do you know?
I believe they're, they are, they've been working the summer in person, so we gather they would continue. But if teletherapy is something that families would prefer, that is certainly another option that we can do. And we are qualified, you know, Lee Carlson's qualified to do that.
Sounds good. Thank you. I don't have anything.
All right. Well, thank you. That's a lot of information and I know it's a lot of work to get everyone back in line, going back to school. In addition to all the other things that aren't mentioned in those, like open houses and all the other.
Yeah, I would say families stay tuned in the next few days. And by next week, they'll be getting information on open houses and orientation and all of that good stuff.
Great. Excellent. I'm sure that's what parents at home are wondering too. They'll get those dates, they'll be coming. All right. Put that news on the streets. All right. Thank you so much to all of you for joining us tonight.
Thank you all.
Yes, thank you.
We will move on to the action items and we will start with Metro ExU membership. And I'll let Emily Gardner, our Teaching and Learning Coordinator, lead this.
All right. Good evening, Chair Severson, Superintendent Stenbeck and members of the board. I am here tonight seeking approval of the Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit membership for the 2021-2022 school year as presented on July 20th by Director Tuckrell.
All right, so the motion is to approve the Metro Educational Cooperative System, sorry, the Metropolitan Educational Cooperative Service Unit membership for the 21-22 school year, which we learned about in previous meeting. Do we have a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Second.
All right, well, the motion was. Mary, second, Hala. All right, discussion on the membership, ExU membership. All right, do a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the joint powers. Right, I thought it was the A. I'm so sorry, Dawn prepped me for that. The joint purchase agreement, it's, it's wrong in our board packet. The joint purchase agreement with the Robinsdale Area Schools, there's information given to us on this in our board packets this week. And I will turn it over to Director Hennekenz and Maggie.
Maggio.
Maggio, our manager of food services.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenbeck for this item, the joint purchasing agreement with Robinsdale Area Schools. I'm going to let our manager of food service, Maggie Maggio, give you a little background. I know I provided some in the update of, you know, what this is and, and this is a recommendation for action. So I'll turn it over to Maggie.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about this. So this would be a joint purchasing agreement to purchase produce as a partnership. Our district, you know, by partnering with a larger district, we're able to have more buying power. And that's really important, especially given prices of produce these days. And the produce will be primarily for our fresh fruit and vegetable program that we run at the elementary schools. And we have a similar agreement with Roseville Schools and that we use to buy from our prime vendor. So the majority of our food, bread and also milk, but they don't have a produce bid. So we need to look to work with another district for that.
Great. So just to be clear on the motion, it is a motion to approve the joint purchasing agreement between Columbia Heights Public Schools and Robinsdale Area Schools. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Lauren?
Second.
Second, Molly. Discussion.
Second.
No.
Second. I think Molly seconded. Oh, sorry.
Just discussion.
Just discussion.
You just looked at me and I was like, what am I supposed to do?
My eyes just rested on you. It's your Highlander colors that draw me in. All right, hearing no discussion, we'll move for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. We'll move on to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, our AMSD membership, something that came up in a previous meeting. And I will be presenting. So my motion is to approve the membership for our Columbia Heights Public Schools in the Association of Metropolitan School Districts for the 2021-2022 school year and authorize payment of dues in the amount of $8,542. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura? Second?
Second.
Hala? Discussion on that? All right. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries. Move on to board topics. I've got a few. Remember to let Dawn know if you're going to be attending convocation and the picnic. Correct? That's one thing. If you want, I'll be there, Dawn. I'll be at both.
I was just going to say, can we do that now? I'll be at both. Thank you.
I'm going.
Okay, she's ready. So we've got, we've got Maddie, we've got Molly and we've got a Laura.
I will be there as well.
Lauren?
Do we have a cake this year?
Tougher for the.
Okay, how much? Okay.
I was going to ask that question as well.
Put it in our board packet. Okay. Second one is there's a morning breakfast to meet new teachers and staff. We're there.
Okay, I have already talked with Director Tuckrell about my attendance and.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you very much.
For scaling the heights, well done. We'll do scaling heights. So again, that's available to you. Just want to make sure everybody knows. And then wanted to let you know that because of some scheduling things and us trying to get that third date with Dr. Mohammed, what we're going to do is shift some things off of our September meeting in hopes that that date is solidified or is that date booked? The work session will include Dr. Mohammed in September. So we would normally do Superintendent Stenbeck's goals and our goals in September. Well, ta-da, they are getting shifted to August. So I wanted to give you this week heads up, so you have an opportunity to be thoughtful or ask questions or have necessary conversations regarding our board goals. So it would be sprung upon you either in your board packet, which you might not read immediately on Friday. I know, I'm just waiting at the door for that thing to come, right? But wanted to give you a full week to be thoughtful about it as we move into setting our goals for this coming school year. Any other board topics?
I just wanted to mention that I appreciated that when we went through the action items, things weren't presented all over again.
Yep, we've heard them.
We get it the first time and sometimes going through it again is time-consuming and a lot.
Say the most.
Yeah.
And for those watching at home, if you're like, wow, they moved right through those action items. We've heard about these in other settings, we did in our board packet and almost always, occasionally not in another meeting, but almost always in the meeting prior to or at least one or two meetings prior to the actual vote. So if you're like, wow, that seems quick, you can go back and you can look at that information in previous meetings and the videos.
Yeah, it gives us time to, to get some answers if we, if we didn't, if we didn't get it at the initial presentation, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it really is.
And I learned that when I came on the board. That's the strategy behind that is we get the big presentation before we vote so that there are, it's time to ask those questions and we're not putting directors on the spot and having to answer questions as we vote, so, or make uninformed decisions.
So we're still able to make an informed decision without the presentation all over again.
Yes.
So let us please continue this.
Well, Superintendent Stenbeck, that's all you. That is your managerial responsibilities there. All right, any other, any other others?
I had to do it, I'm sorry. I love it. I live for this moment.
I'm sorry. All right, hearing none, we will, no, you have to ask it three times.
I just did owed her that she lives for the moment, to any other others.
All right, great, awesome.
Yeah, look, there's very little things that I can take pleasure in right now while we're on these darkest timelines.
2021, having, hearing no other others, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:55 PM.